Good afternoon, everyone. I am Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission of October 20th, 2025. We're joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Sarulo, Dweck, Gold, Goodridge, and Osorio. And thanks to all of you. I think we're expecting at least one or two more in a few moments. Before we dive into today's agenda, I want to just very quickly share some recent news from the Department of City Planning. First of all, I'm very pleased to report that on Thursday, October 9, the New York City Council Land Use Committee and Zoning Subcommittee voted unanimously to approve with some modifications the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. This transformative proposal can update zoning to deliver nearly 12,000 new homes and mandate affordable housing across a 230-block area, the largest mandatory inclusionary housing zone ever mapped in New York City. The plan also focuses on economic opportunity, generating over 2 million square feet of commercial and community facility space and facilitating more than 7,000 new jobs. This would strengthen Jamaica's role as a thriving live-work neighborhood where residents can find opportunities close to home. Alongside these homes and jobs, the plan would invest over $400 million to enhance infrastructure, walkability, flood resilience, public health, and more. And I want to really express my gratitude to Speaker Adams, Chair Salamanca and Riley, and of course, Councilmember Natasha Williams for their continuing partnership, leadership, and support of this comprehensive and transformational plan that can help Jamaica grow and thrive into the future. As I noted, the council made a few changes. We will be making some scope determinations on Wednesday. Also, last week, we kicked off a five-borough series of town halls to share our draft NYC industrial plan and discuss this vision for the future of the city's industrial sector. The team began at BMCC in Manhattan on October 9 and St. Francis College in Brooklyn on October 16. More stops are coming soon in Queens, Staten Island, and the Bronx. You can see the dates and times at NYC.gov/IndustrialPlan. Moving to the agenda today, we're going to start on Staten Island with Arden Heights Woods Stream Restoration, an application from the New York City Departments of Environmental Protection, Design and Construction, and Citywide Administrative Services. The proposal calls for establishing easements through two privately-owned lots and purchasing another privately-owned lot to allow for the enhancement of stormwater management and restoration and stabilization of area stream banks. Shifting to post-referral reviews, we then turned to an application to facilitate a new six-story, 167,000-square-foot film production facility at 176 Dykman Street in Red Hook, Brooklyn. This building would include four sound stages that support two simultaneous productions and would generate between 600 and 800 jobs. Notably, the zoning authorization enabling this project was created, as you all recall, just last year through City of Yes for Economic Opportunity, which simplified pathways for businesses like this one to grow, thrive, and create jobs for New Yorkers. Once again, incredibly satisfying to see the tools that we put into place being used out there in the world. Next, we move to Midtown East to examine a proposal to facilitate pedestrian amenities in a privately-owned public space at 599 Lexington Avenue. Specifically, the proposal would entail modifying an existing special permit from 1984. This would allow recently-installed amenities, including planters and seating, to be retained on a permanent basis. And last order of business, we have several post-hearing follow-ups. With that in mind, Madam Secretary, I'm going to turn it over to you. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, October 20, 2025. The time is 1:07 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of an acquisition in Staten Island Community District 3. Our presenter is Oliver Vega.
Hello, Oliver. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Garadnik. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Oliver Vega. I'm a Borough Planner with the Staten Island Office. I'll give it a second. Okay. Great. And this is the Arden Heights Woods Stream Restoration Project.
It looks like the clicker is not working. You can say next slide to progress.
Okay, great. This is a public application from DEP, DDC, and DCAST seeking an acquisition of real property by the city to facilitate the establishment of easements through Block 5733, Lot 1, Block 5776, Lot 70, and the purchase of Block 5735, Lot 156. This action would enable the construction of new sewer outfalls with stormwater best management practices, BMPs, and the installation of a series of downstream bank restoration and erosion prevention measures within the Arden Heights Woods watershed in the Arden Heights neighborhood of Staten Island Community District 3. The Staten Island Blue Belt Network consists of streams, ponds, wetlands, and other watercourses that span 16 watersheds across the southern half of the borough and serve as essential nature-based components of the area's stormwater management system. In 2003, DEP prepared the South Richmond Watershed Drainage Plan, which covers 10 of these watersheds, including the Arden Heights Woods watershed, much of which is pictured here. In order to substantially complete the drainage plan within the Arden Heights Woods watershed, DEP proposes to construct six storm sewers and best management practices, which are structures that are designed to attenuate the flow of stormwater into local waterways. Four of these projects have already or will be constructed on land already owned by the city. Two of these projects, BMP AH2 and BMP AH5, would require additional land beyond what the city already owns in the area. BMP AH2 would extend from a sewer outfall adjacent to Woodrow Road into the natural areas of Blocks 5733 and 5735. BMP AH5 would extend from a sewer outfall adjacent to Arden Avenue into Block 5776. Both BMPs would be south of Arden Heights Woods Park, east of the West Shore Expressway, and west of the Korean War Veterans Parkway. I'm going to see if this clicker works. Great. This is a tax map that depicts the lots that would contain BMP AH2. Block 5733, Lot 1, is a 321,048-square-foot, heavily wooded lot that is owned by Woodrow Road Homeowners Association. Block 5735, Lot 156, is a 3,920-square-foot privately-owned vacant lot. The areas highlighted in yellow would be acquired via easement, and the areas shown in red would be acquired via parcel acquisition. Block 5735, Lot 156, is mostly gravelled and contains an existing outfall on the northernly side of Woodrow Road. The applicant states that the outfall was illegally modified and that the lot was clear-cut and filled by the current owners without permission from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC, who has jurisdiction on the site due to its wetlands adjacency, and that the proposed project would involve restoring the site to its original condition in coordination with DEC. Block 5733, Lot 1, remains in its natural condition and contains most of the stream, whose channel continues to deepen and banks continue to erode due to unchecked stormwater The acquisitions of a portion of Block 5733, Lot 1 via easement, and the entirety of Block 5735, Lot 156 via parcel acquisition would enable the construction of BMP AH2. Applicants seek to acquire a .6-acre easement with Lot 1 that extends 424 feet downstream into the lot from its Woodrow Road frontage in order to facilitate stream bank reconstruction and stabilization downstream of the detention basin. The applicants seek to purchase Lot 156 to replace the existing outfall with new infrastructure that conforms to the above-mentioned drainage plan, construct a permanent maintenance driveway, and to install minor landscaping. Again, the property that would be acquired via easement is shown in yellow, and the property that would be acquired via parcel acquisition is shown in red. The stormwater BMP would primarily consist of a basin comprised of fieldstone and riprap that would reduce the velocity of water coming from the outfall into the stream in order to prevent erosion, preserve the stream bank, and promote hydrological flow. Block 5776, Lot 70, is a 9,375-square-foot privately-owned lot improved with a two-family home that contains heavily wooded areas along the rear lot line. The image on the left looks up at the existing outfall and basin adjacent to Arden Avenue, where an illegally constructed and now dilapidated retaining wall has collapsed into the streambed. The image on the right looks downstream. Here, you can clearly see the extent to which erosion has degraded the streambank to the point where abutting private properties are now threatened. The acquisition of a portion of Block 5776, Lot 70 via easement, would enable the construction of BMP AH5. While BMP AH5 would primarily be located within adjacent lots that are already owned by the city, the applicant states that a 50-foot-wide, approximately 2,900-square-foot easement must be acquired to allow for the alterations that would support the rerouting of the existing stream and the reshaping of adjacent slopes, as well as ensuring future maintenance access. This stormwater BMP also primarily consists of a basin comprised of fieldstone and riprap that would attenuate the velocity of water flowing from the outfall before it enters the stream. The applicants seek an acquisition of real property by the city to facilitate the establishment of a .6-acre permanent easement through Block 5733, Lot 1, acquisition of 3,920-square-foot Block 5735, Lot 156, establishment of a 2,900-square-foot permanent easement through Block 5776, Lot 70. These acquisitions would enable the installation of stormwater best management practices, BMP AH2 and AH5, and the restoration and stabilization of associated stream banks. These projects would advance the implementation of DEP's South Richmond Watershed Drainage Plan. The acquired land would be placed under DEP jurisdiction and incorporated into the Staten Island Blue Belt System. And no South Richmond district actions are necessary for this application, as projects associated with the Staten Island Blue Belt System are exempt from the provisions of the SRD per this language in the ZR Section 10702. This language was added to the ZR by the South Richmond Zoning Relief Text Amendment, which was adopted in November 2023. And that is the end of the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Sorry about our technical issues down here, but we appreciate your role in with them. Let me start with Commissioner Sarulo.
Oliver, thank you. And thank you, Chair. I know this is certification, so not to belabor any questions that we'll learn a lot more about along the way, and being a real supporter of the Blue Belt concept and system, I do have one quick question. What do we know at this point about outreach to the private owners, whether they're the owners of sort of undeveloped, I guess, three sites? One was the Homeowners Association, one was private owner, but it looked like it was undeveloped, and then one was land adjacent to a two-family home. I don't know if there's any linkage between these owners, or they're all individuals, you know, all separate entities or individuals. What do we know about outreach at this point in the process to them about this process so that they're fully engaged, if necessary, in the public review process?
I mean, from what we understand from the application, the applicants have been in touch with the owners, but they could definitely speak to that at the public hearing.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. I should probably know this, but I'll ask the question. I know outright acquisitions of property must be compensated, but for easements, are they also compensated to the owners of the property?
There is. It is a parcel acquisition. There is mention of a fee in the application, but the applicant can definitely speak to that at the public hearing.
No, I just, you know, wanted to know whether or not there was compensation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm rather certain that that is correct, that there would be. I mean, somebody can give an easement for free if they wish, but also there is no right for the city to do it without compensation here. So, okay. You all correct me if I've said something wrong, but I think I'm right on this one. Thumbs up. I'm getting thumbs up from the crowd. Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, thumbs up, not just from the crowd, thumbs up from precise members of the crowd who actually know the answer to that question, just to be clear. Okay. Let me see if there are other questions here. Let me just pose one. So, the goal here is to restore and manage the streams and their natural flow and path. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there's a filtering component to this, too. Is that right? How does that work exactly? How does the filtering work in this context?
I mean, from what I understand, the riprap and the stones have, as my lead mentioned here, that there's limestone that would help filter the stormwater that would be flowing through the system, and then the water would be filtered from the streams into Richmond Creek and then to Arthur Kill.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, we're now certified. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to the next slide.
Okay. The second item on our agenda is a non-U-LAR post-referral review of a zoning authorization in Brooklyn Community District 6. Presenting for the first time to the commission is Rosat Lamut.
All right, welcome. Glad you're here.
Good afternoon, Chair Garadnik and Commissioners. Wait for this to come up. This is a post-referral review for 176 Dykman Street Bulk Authorization, a private application in the Red Hook neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 6, that was referred to CB6 on September 18. This is a private application from NYM 145 Walcott LLC for zoning authorization to facilitate a new six-story, 167,000-square-foot film production facility, including four sound stages that would support two simultaneous productions in between 600 to 800 jobs in Red Hook, Brooklyn, CD6. The project area is in the outer transit zone. It's primarily served by the B-61 bus with service to downtown Brooklyn. Red Hook Ferry Terminal with service to downtown Manhattan and Brooklyn Bridge Park is three blocks northwest of the project area. The closest subway station is the Smith 9th Street Station, serving F and G lines, and is a 20-minute walk from the project area. Project area is a five-minute drive from the Brooklyn-Queens Expressway, an important freight route. Project area is within the southwest Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, which is shown here in purple. Brooklyn Marine Terminal is located to the north, stretching along the waterfront from the Atlantic Basin to Brooklyn Bridge Park. Building heights in the surrounding area range from 10 feet for single-story warehouses to 70 feet for commercial and loft-style industrial buildings. Valentino Park and Pier is two blocks to the southwest. The development site is located within the coastal zone and partially within the high-risk fund zone. Project area is within the line of protection of the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency Project, a neighborhood coastal flood protection system for which mapping and acquisition actions were approved by the commission in May of 2024. Construction broke down last month and is anticipated to be completed by 2027. The development site is an 85,000-square-feet vacant lot with about 275 feet of frontage on Dyken Street to the southeast, 200 feet of frontage on Ferris Street to the northwest, 500 feet of frontage on Walcott Street to the northeast, and 175 feet of frontage on Conover Street to the southeast, all of which are narrow streets with a width of 60 feet. The surrounding area features a mix of uses. Industrial uses include warehousing, distribution, and manufacturing. Vacant land and surface parking are located along the shoreline immediately west of the development site. Commercial uses include restaurants, shops, and design studios. Residential uses include one- and two-family homes, as well as multifamily walk-ups and a multifamily elevator building. Community facility uses include numerous schools, community centers, and a food bank. The development site is located in M21 zoning district, which permits 2.0 FAR for a variety of manufacturing and commercial uses. The maximum base height is 60 feet, above which a 20-foot setback is required on narrow streets. Maximum height is covered by a sky-exposure plane. Directly to the south of the site is mapped as an M11 district, which permits 1.0 FAR for a variety of manufacturing and commercial uses and 2.4 FAR for community facility uses with a maximum base height of 30 feet. The surrounding area also features an R5 zoning district, a medium-density non-architectural residential district, and a C13 overlay along Van Bunt Street. The site wraps around existing three-to-five-story commercial, industrial, and residential buildings which run onto Dykman Street. Across Dykman Street, there is a vacant lot used for surface parking, two residential realhomes at the mid-block, a two-story building which houses a commercial photography studio, and a one-story industrial complex which houses a maraschino cherry factory. A large vacant lot owned by UPS sits between the development site and the shoreline across Ferris Street. Across Walcott Street, there's a three-story loft-style light-industrial building on the left, which is actively used for manufacturing of architectural finishes, and large surface parking lots which are used for bus parking. Across Conover Street in the R5 district are South Brooklyn Community High School and two three-to-four-story residential buildings. Now we'll move clockwise around the site to understand the surrounding context. Looking southwest on Light Street with the development site on the right, on the left is South Brooklyn Community High School. Further down the block, there are residential buildings on both sides of the street, ranging from two stories to four stories. Looking northwest with the development site on the right, you can see existing residential and commercial buildings adjacent to the development area and the vacant lot across the street. The development site has frontage further down the street. Looking northeast on Ferris Street with the development site on the right, you can see a vacant lot on the left along the shoreline, the Brooklyn Marine Terminal site straight ahead. Now looking west on Seaco Street with the development site on the right, you can see a three-story, sorry, on Walcott Street with the development site on the right, you can see a three-story loft-style light-industrial building on the left. Further down the street are garages and parking lots. The structure on the sidewalk to the right is part of an interim flood protection system that will be removed and replaced by the Red Hook Coastal Resilience Project. The proposed development is a new six-story, 167,028 square feet, 1.97 FAR film production facility that aims to fill the demand for state-of-the-art purpose-built production facilities in New York City. The proposed development would include four sound stages averaging over 16,700 square feet each, two mills totaling 6,500 square feet, ancillary support spaces totaling 30,500 square feet, including dressing rooms, hair and makeup, wardrobe, set decoration, prop storage, and lunchrooms which will be located on the upper floors. Production offices and writer suites totaling 29,000 square feet would be located within the perimeter of the upper stories. Five required loading berths would be located on the ground floor, and 202 required parking spaces would be located below grade. The proposed development will account for the projected sea level rise to the year 2100, and integrates wet and dry flood-proofing measures such as flood barriers and flood vents to exceed minimum design flood elevation requirements per Appendix G of the New York City Building Code. The ground floor would include four sound stages, as well as mills, ancillary support spaces, loading docks, and interior corridors, allowing operations of two simultaneous productions to be entirely contained within the zoning envelope. Numerous existing curb cuts surrounding the development site would be removed and replaced by two curb cuts. The 28-foot-wide curb cut The twenty eight foot wide curb cut on Walcott Street providing access to the below grade parking located approximately fifty feet east of the intersection with Ferrer Street and a seventy five foot wide curb cut on Dyckman Street providing access to the loading burs approximately one hundred ninety feet east of the intersection with Ferrer Street. Each soundstage would have an industry standard minimum depth of eighty five feet and a column three clear height of forty feet, allowing for flexible and efficient set design. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant seeks a zoning authorization for bulk modifications. This discretionary action was established as part of City of Yes for Economic Opportunity last year with the aim of simplifying pathways for businesses like the production facility proposed to achieve the building envelope they need to grow and thrive in New York City. The authorization sought would not change permitted uses, floor area or parking regulations of the underlying zoning districts, but would allow the proposed development to comply with more loft like bulk regulations of C seven districts. This authorization is exclusive to non residential uses and only allows preutilization of the C seven district regulations that most closely match the maximum FAR of the underlying M zone. In this instance, C seven two bulk regulations would be applied to law at a zoned M two one. In the next few slides, I'll outline the bulk modifications that would be made possible by the proposed authorization. The as of right envelope is outlined in black. The proposed envelope is a blue dash line. The portions of the proposed bulk envelope that would extend beyond the as of right envelope are shaded in blue and the proposed development is shaded in gray. First authorization would reduce the required rear yard at rear lot lines from twenty feet to ten feet below a height of sixty five feet and to fifteen feet between a height of sixty five and one hundred twenty five feet. This would also increase the height of permitted obstructions in rear yards from twenty feet to thirty feet. The authorization would eliminate, eliminate a requirement for a twenty foot rear yard equivalent along the side lot line highlighted in blue, allowing the building to be built to the lot line adjacent to the existing three to five story buildings. The applicant states that this modification will allow for stage three to extend an additional ten feet and would allow for an expansion of support spaces on higher floors. The bulk authorization would increase the maximum base height from sixty feet to sixty five feet, would reduce the required setback above that base from twenty feet to fifteen feet and would change the way maximum height is measured from a sky exposure plane with a two point seven one slope to a maximum height of one hundred eighteen feet. This would allow ancillary support and office spaces to be located above the sound stages. Taken together, the authorization would result in elimination of a, a yard requirement along the side lot line, an increase in maximum base height between five and fifteen feet, a decrease in setback above that base by five feet and a change in the way maximum height is calculated, allowing for a more loft like building envelope with a maximum height established at one hundred eighteen feet. Using these bulk modifications, each soundstage would be able to have an industry standard minimum depth of eighty five feet and a clear height of forty feet. The modifications would also facilitate an internal loading corridor, allowing all movement of people, props and set materials to take place in the building. The authorization requires the commission to find that the bulk modifications will not be incompatible with or adversely affect the central character, use or future growth of the surrounding area and will not unduly obstruct access of light and air to surrounding streets and properties. The commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area. The technical drawings included in this application include notes on urban design controls to ensure adequate facade articulation that will break up long street walls and create a dynamic pedestrian experience. On October eighth, twenty twenty five, Brooklyn Community Board Six voted thirty three in favor with none opposed and none abstaining to approve this application with the following conditions. Increased street wall transparency around the set fabrication shop to help establish a stronger visual connection with the community and installation of rooftop solar array. In summary, this is a private application by NYM one forty five Walcott LLC for zoning authorization to facilitate a new six story, one hundred sixty seven thousand square feet film production facility, including four sound stages and associated support spaces aimed at filling the demand for state of the art purpose built production facility in New York City while providing between six hundred to eight hundred jobs in Red Hook, Brooklyn, CD six. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. First of all, congratulations, well done. Um, I'll start with Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you Chair. Uh, so in the absence of, of City of Yes, the applicant would have needed to obtain a special permit, right?
Hi, great question. Emily Bachman from the Brooklyn office. Um, in the absence of City of Yes, the applicant could pursue an as of right development very similar to this, but abiding by the bulk regulations that are in place under M two one. So if we go back a couple of slides, um, they could fill the envelope that's shown in black here. Um, and for full transparency, they filed building permits to build a building that would be compliant um without this authorization. Um, so that's their, that's their scenario if, if the authorization's not granted and as of right facility that's slightly more setback and slightly taller um pursuant to the envelope.
Without the City of Yes?
Yep.
And if they did not uh want to pursue the as of right envelope, they would have done what?
There was a special permit that existed, um, right? I think. There was a special permit that existed before um that would have allowed them to seek bulk modifications under a special permit. Yep. Um, what we did with City of Yes, um, and I have the slides from that, I believe here, was we, we created a new authorization that replaced that old special permit. Um, and we also created the new C seven district regulations um that are tied to that new authorization. So we defined what the shape of the building would be and then we created an authorization that would allow the applicant through a discretionary process that we're doing right now to pursue that envelope.
Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Gold.
So jumping to, I guess, page twenty one of the presentation, it seems the finding has to be, and I get this is all new, but um, well not probably key word here, unduly obstruct access of light and air to surrounding streets and properties. And I guess what I was curious about is when you look at the map, I think on page four, uh, I think it's four, um, you can see right next to the facility, I guess the most affected would be the big gray which seems to say it's either vacant land or UPS owned, I can't tell. Do we know um what's, what's there and um, you know, any, anything, am I right on that? Is it vacant right now and is it UPS used for perhaps truck storage or nothing or? So, so yeah, uh, the one that, the one that says UPS, I'm looking at.
Yeah, so the, the big UPS lot was acquired by UPS in the last five to ten years. Um, it's fully vacant, there's no known um proposed development for that site and the site is, has the same zoning as this development site, it's M two one. Um, so without a discretionary process, it would be an as of right M two one development.
Got it, got it.
But we're not aware of any proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's probably not a question for this moment, but I'm thinking out loud about the concept of unduly obstructing light and air because obviously anything you do is going to obstruct light and air and, you know, it's just a question of what unduly means, I guess, so. Uh, for, for future, but, but it's helpful to know that that's, that that's vacant with similar zoning, so I think that does it for the moment.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Soria.
Thank you Chair, thanks for the presentation. I have two quick questions. The first one is really just to ask, um, what's been the general response to the requests from the community board in both, on both the street wall transparency and the rooftop solar array?
Um, so the applicant has committed to solar on rooftop and they've said that twenty five percent of their energy will come from solar. Um, and in regards to the transparency, they said they would revisit it, but we have, um, we've just received their recommendation from the community board, so we don't have an official response from the applicant yet, so we can let you know in terms of that.
Oh, great, perfect, yeah. Would love to see anything in writing. Also, if you can share, it's exciting to hear that there's such a big percentage expected to be generated by solar. I, that's, that's important. If you can share further details that they become, as they become available, I would appreciate that. Um, the second question that I have is um also important to note that the applicant is saying that beyond the three hundred to three fifty jobs, uh, construction jobs, there could be up to eight hundred permanent jobs and so there's no additional information in the materials and, and I'm wondering if you can share a little bit more detail on this? What type of jobs are we talking about and what wages? Um, and, and is there a commitment or an opportunity to hire locally?
Yeah, um, well, you know, they've said that uh jobs in the film production industry are high paid union jobs usually. Um, I can check with them like what kind of jobs they expect those to be and how they're uh sourcing those. Um, and they've also committed to working with some local organizations around workforce development, so Red Hook, I think it's Red Hook Media, um, around uh pathways into media and um training New York youth for careers in film production and post production and they're also working with Hook Arts Media to um support tailor community based programs in their um, in Red Hook and Brookshire.
Thank you. So if, if you can provide additional information just to make sure, you know, we have a clear understanding of what are the current efforts to hire locally, that'd be fantastic.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay, um, I see no other questions, so thank you again, congratulations, we'll schedule this one for a vote. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item three.
The third item on our agenda is a non U-LR post referral review of a modification of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District Six.
Thank you.
Our presenter is.
Yep, sorry, who's our presenter? We know, go ahead, tell us.
Hi, I'm Ally Salley and I'll be the presenter.
Thank you Ally, I just wanted to note that Commissioner Surulow is accused on this item. Ally, go right ahead whenever you're ready.
All right, good afternoon Commissioners. This is a private application by BP five nine nine Lexington Avenue LLC requesting a non U-LR modification to a special permit approved in nineteen eighty four pursuant to ZR eighty one fifty three subway station improvements as applicable at the time of approval. The modification is requested to allow for the addition of pedestrian amenities within an existing non bonus pops or privately owned public space on the site. The development site is located at five ninety nine Lexington Avenue along Lexington between East Fifty Second and East Fifty Third Streets in the Midtown East neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Six. The image on the right shows the development site looking northeast. Here you can see a map of the surrounding area with north oriented towards the top. The land use within the surrounding area is characterized by high density commercial uses with some scattered residential and institutional uses. The development site is zone C six six along the avenues and C six four point five on the mid block and is highlighted here in yellow. Here's a plan of the development site with northeast oriented towards the top of the slide. The zoning lot is composed of lots twenty three and twenty nine of block thirteen oh seven and has an area of approximately fifty four thousand square feet. Lot twenty three is improved with a forty seven story commercial office building, which includes a non bonus pops, which is shown here in purple, and provides subway access. Lot twenty nine is improved with a nine story mixed use building. The building on lot twenty three was constructed with bonus floor area granted in a nineteen eighty four ZR section eighty one fifty three special permit for major improvements to the Fifty Third Street Lexington Avenue and the Fifty First Street Lexington subway stations. As part of the approval, a non bonus pops was required to be provided at the intersection of Lexington and East Fifty Third Street and along the street frontages, which are shown here in the, in the special permit drawing on the right, the non bonus pops is highlighted in purple. The space was required to remain accessible, usable, unobstructed and open to the public twenty four hours per day. In July of twenty twenty three, DCP issued a letter of no objection to allow for pedestrian amenities, including planting and seeding, to be installed in the public space on a temporary basis. As part of this letter, DCP required that by May thirty first, twenty twenty five, the owner needed to either remove the temporary amenities or submit an application to modify the special permit to make them permanent. Accordingly, the applicant filed this application in May of twenty twenty five for modification to the approved nineteen eighty four special permit drawings to allow these pedestrian amenities to remain in the plaza on a permanent basis. So here is a picture of the public space in the condition reflected in the nineteen eighty four special permit drawings before the temporary amenities were put in place. And here you can see the applicant's proposed design for the plaza. They're proposing to add a number of seeding and planting modules as well as standalone planters and trees. Altogether, the proposed design includes fifty one linear feet of seeding, about two hundred and ninety square feet of planting and eight trees. Here you can see the images of the proposed module planting and seeding clusters and the trees and planting along the walls. These amenities are currently in the plaza on a temporary basis and the applicant is looking to retain them permanently. And here are some additional images of the same. On October ninth, twenty twenty five, Community Board Six voted to support this application. The resolution passed with thirty nine in favor, zero against and zero abstaining. In summary, the applicant is seeking a non U-LR modification to a nineteen eighty four special permit to facilitate the addition of pedestrian amenities, including planting and seeding, in a non bonus pops. Thank you for listening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Ally. So just as a practical matter for somebody walking by five ninety nine Lexington Avenue, they would see these there today, they're there as a legal matter temporarily through the twenty twenty three action uh from the Department of City Planning, no objection. This would be to allow what is there to stay there, but to enable them to be legally permanently there, is that correct?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, great. Let me see if there are any questions for you. There are none. So um, we're gonna move to a voice vote on this one. Uh, I'm gonna seek consent by voice vote to send an approval letter to the Department of Buildings, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it, this item is approved, thank you Ally.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item four.
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Seven. Our presenter on Zoom is Joy Chen.
Good afternoon Chair and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Hi, hi from the Queensborough office. This item eighteen fifteen Francis Lewis Boulevard Commercial Overlay is back for its pre hearing review. Uh, next slide please. Thanks. Uh, so this commercial overlay located in the Whitestone section of Queens Community District Seven is located along the eastern side of Francis Lewis Boulevard at a four way intersection um between Eighteenth Avenue, Nineteenth Avenue and One Hundred and Sixtieth Street. And this would be for a new commercial C one two overlay in an existing R three two zoning district. No new development is proposed and this action would bring a dental office, which is a non complying use into compliance. Next slide please. This shows the triangular lot that would be mapped with a commercial overlay and it's in with, and it's in keeping with the commercial nature of this stretch of Francis Lewis Boulevard. Next slide please. On September ninth, Queens Community Board Seven voted forty four in favor, so it's a unanimous vote in favor for approval of this application for a new commercial C one two overlay. Next slide. The Queensborough president also recommended approval of this application on October sixth. And this concludes my presentation and the applicants will be here on Wednesday to give their um presentation at the public hearing.
Great, we will pick this up with them, but before we do, we have a question or two for you from Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. My only question was, under what? How was this building constructed and what was its intended use when it obtained a building permit?
Yeah, so um, the original building was actually constructed prior to the nineteen sixty one zoning resolution in nineteen sixty, um, and it's always been used since then. Um, and then in nineteen sixty one or nineteen sixty, they had their first of a series of BSA variances that they had to approve for. The first one was a twenty year um time limit and they've renewed it every ten years up until the present time for a professional dental office. So um, since nineteen sixty, it has been. So since nineteen sixty, it has been used as a, you know, professional medical and dental office. It's a one-story building with a basement, and no new development is being proposed. The the commercial overlay is really just being mapped to, you know, bring this non-compliant use into compliance, so they don't have to keep going back to the BSA.
Couldn't this use be a community facility use?
Uh, yeah, it can also be a community facility use.
And wouldn't the community facility use be permitted in the R three-two?
Um, the professional, so the dental office use is actually classified as a use group seven use. So and it was always, you know, for you, it's been used continuously since the nineteen sixties for medic for this dental, professional dental use. And there's a series of, there's other offices, it's not just one dental office, but it's, you know, several small professional dental offices that are classified as a use group seven professional dental office use. So it was subject to BSA permit, and they were not able, you know, it's they couldn't use it as couldn't be classified as a as-of-right community facility.
But the medical offices could. Could they not?
Uh, yeah, medical offices could, but this is a dental office, which is, for some reason, classified as a another use group, like a higher, you know, use group.
Okay, thank you. So you're saying that it was, when it was constructed in nineteen sixty, it was a conforming building in nineteen sixty?
It is overbuilt. So nineteen sixty was before the nineteen sixty-one zoning resolution, but the zoning here, I think the most recent change was the Whitestone rezoning, which was more than ten years ago to map like R three-two in lower-density districts. And at the time, this was already, you know, the medical, it was already a dental office. But and other commercial overlays were mapped along this stretch of Francis Lewis Boulevard, you know, like the C one-two, to recognize some of the pre-existing commercial uses. But for some reason, this was left out or wasn't part of that change during the Whitestone rezoning. But it's very, you know, fitting with the established character of it. And this commercial overlay kind of kind of recognizes that and helps bring those commercial uses into compliance.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing that it's zoning-wise, that it's appropriate. I'm concerned about whether the building was originally complying with zoning when it was built. And are we now legalizing something that was not legally permitted when it was built?
Um, according to.
You can get back to me with the answer, but.
Yeah, I'll get back.
I have an issue.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Let's follow up. Let's.
Yeah.
Let's follow up on that. Yeah, let's do that.
BSA, yeah, original BSA variance.
The question we certainly can can answer.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Commissioner Benjamin, did you have other questions?
No, that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay, we will follow up and answer to that question, and we will also be picking this one up for a public hearing on Wednesday. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to our next pre-hearing review.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Abraham LaBrau.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, so this is the pre-hearing review for Eagle Street demapping in Greenpoint, Brooklyn Community District One. Uh, so this is an application by BOP Greenpoint D L L C. They are seeking an amendment to the city map to eliminate the portion of Eagle Street that's located to the west of West Street, highlighted in orange on that inset aerial. This application was certified by the department on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. So this portion of Eagle Street is privately owned, and it's a paper street, so it's on the city map. It was never developed or improved as a city street. Its actions being pursued at the request of DEP pursuant to the infrastructure maintenance declaration dated December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, which provides for ongoing maintenance by the property owner of the water and sewer infrastructure that is under the street proposed to be demapped. As typically advised zoning, the demapped portion of Eagle Street would continue to be publicly accessible as part of the required waterfront access, as well as providing vehicular and pedestrian access to the developments on either side of the to-be-demapped street. I'm going into public review so far. On September third, twenty twenty-five, Brooklyn Community Board One held a hearing on this project. And on September ninth, they voted and issued a favorable recommendation with thirty-seven in favor, zero against, and zero abstaining. Following that, on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the borough president also issued a favorable recommendation for this project. That is the presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. We're gonna pick this one up on Wednesday for a public hearing. But Commissioner Sorio has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, just, and I think you just said it. I just wanted to confirm. There's no modifications to the waterfront access plan, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, thank you for that. We'll pick this one up Wednesday. Madam Secretary, what's next?
Future votes, future votes for October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. For consideration, we have one forty-two Flag Place, Forty-seven Favue Place SNAT Authorization, and Jenna Lane Modification in Staten Island Community District Two. Briefing packages were included in your week in materials. Also, staff have prepared reports on Preys Tabernacle, which had a public hearing at the October eighth public meeting. Alika Ade is here to present.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. The Department of City Planning staff finds the applicant's proposal for a UDAP designation and project approval to facilitate conveyance of a previously approved disposition of city-owned property to the Preys Tabernacle Church to continue worship services, childcare services, outreach programs, and community events as appropriate. It would also enable the church to make improvements to the building, refinance their mortgage, and ensure the viability and certainty of future operations. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you.
Staff have also prepared reports on Brooklyn CD five and Queen CD three walk-to-park site selections and acquisitions, and on the AMA follow-up action. Lastly, for consideration on Wednesday is the Coney Island bid, which also had a public hearing at the October eighth public meeting. Sashi Cooper is here. Is there any questions? Okay. Post-hearing follow-ups. For post-hearing follow-ups for items heard on October eighth, first for Herkimer Williams, there was public testimony shared in your materials. Jesse Hirakawa is on Zoom if there are any questions, but will join us on November third to present. Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, we have NYCTA Tuskegee Airmen Way City Map Change. Tat Wing Wong is here to present. Correction, Stephen Leonard is here to present.
Hello, Stephen. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is a NYCTA Tuskegee Airmen Way City Map Change. It is a demapping of a traffic island and one traffic lane in Jamaica, Queens, to facilitate the reconstruction of a MTA bus depot. And Department of City Planning recommends approval. Requested action would allow for needed upgrades to depot facility while improving bus circulation in and around the depot and will not significantly impair traffic circulation in the area. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the for the follow-up. I all most of the questions were addressed there. I appreciate the some of the clarifications that were made there in terms of storage. It sounds like there will be storage, but for smaller batteries. I also appreciate the the clarifications regarding the the plan for cleaning the fleet. But it wasn't clear when is the MTA expecting that the transition will be made. This is, I think, important, given the fact that in the comments from the borough president, there was the understanding that this was already gonna be a clean fleet. And so I'm wondering if you know, when will the MTA, when are they planning on making the transition? In other words, at the public hearing, we heard that initially, there's gonna be a fueling station, but eventually, the fleet will transition. In the memo that we got, there's a seventy-five-year span, I think, for anticipated for the building, but it's not clear when will the transition be made. Do you know?
To to electric?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, actually, but we can ask them for further classification on that point.
Great, thanks so much. I appreciate that. And also, thanks for the follow-up on the public benefit, on the parking spots that will be actually taken off. So I appreciate that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I I thank you, and I thank the MTA for providing the information. But the map that they provided of the bus movements necessary to exit the facility from the wash station or from the others was somewhat confusing. It looked like that a articulated bus, if it was in the wash station, would have to make six movements in order to exit the facility from, which seemed excessive, because they also showed that another other buses might be leaving, not from the wash station, but from the upstairs storage. Or it didn't seem like they could all be making movements at the same time. And I'm presuming that there are peaks when they want or need all the buses on the line. So for the future, the diagram was not as helpful as it could have been in showing that this facility will be able to handle the number of buses they're anticipating, all the way to for seventy-five years in particular.
Right.
If you would just let them know, I'd like a little more in the future.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, great. Thanks, Stephen. Appreciate it. What do we have left, Madam Secretary?
There are no other items for the review session, Chair. Grab that.
Okay, well, great. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time today. We will see you Wednesday morning at ten a.m. And with that, this review session of October twentieth is adjourned.
The time is one fifty-nine p.m.
I'm exhausted already.